I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Stegner.
Here.
Mr. Hale.
Here.
Minton. Ms. Abson. Mr. Webb.
Here.
Justin Parker.
Present.
Bill Parker.
Yep.
Mr. Grandstaff.
Here.
And I am here.
Okay, we move on to approval of tonight's agenda. Anybody have anything they'd like to add to the agenda or subtract? If not, would you like, anybody like to make a motion that we-
I'll make the motion to approve the November 2nd agenda as seen.
Mr. Parker made the motion to approve tonight's agenda. The agenda was seconded by Mr. Webb. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Approval of the meeting minutes from October 5th, 2023, sorry.
I did, I had a question on the minutes.
Okay.
It states here, we opened the public hearing and closed the public hearing. Did we actually go through that process or do we just postpone and eliminate the public hearing?
On the-
It was for the special land, or the, yeah, was it special land use? Industrial property.
Yeah, what, I have no idea what happened to that.
He didn't have all the information. He requested it to be removed.
Are we, are we here tonight or is that-
No, that's not even on here.
They're not here.
For tonight, so it was removed, but the notes state that you opened the meeting, the public hearing, I should say.
Right.
And then closed it. I don't know, I think that should be removed from the minutes because that never happened.
Well, like, did we, is that what, I think we-
Didn't he open it and close it because then we'd-
I, I don't think, because I actually thought, I remember sitting here thinking, man, I think we should still have the public hearing even because it was posted and we never went through that process. And I tried to watch back on the, but it was, we missed like the first seven minutes that it didn't get recorded. Yeah, I tried, I can't remember.
It didn't get recorded, the first seven minutes?
I couldn't find it online unless they have a copy that's unedited or, I guess we could look at that and revisit it because, I mean, these are just official minutes. If it didn't happen, it shouldn't be on there.
I thought we opened and closed it though. Anybody agree with me or?
I can't remember, I honestly can't.
Yeah.
Now we don't have a video record.
Can we table, do these need to be approved or can these be tabled until next month for approval?
Well, we can table it, table the table, so to speak.
Sure, table approval of minutes and I'll see if we can get a copy from the mitt.
Well, you want to make a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion to table approval of October 5th meeting minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we table that, all right. So, public forum, anybody have anything to say? There's nobody here, so no. So let's move on to unfinished business. First item is the fence permit language revisited. Do you want us to speak on that for us?
So, at the last planning commission meeting, or two meetings prior, we decided to make one change, and that is on page four, item number two. The language had said, "No obscuring fence, except those established and maintained by the village, county, state, or federal governments shall be located within the triangle formed by the intersection of any road, right-of-way, easements, and/or access drives or pedestrian walks at points of 20 feet distance from point to point of the intersection." And we decided, instead of just making a distinction between obscuring fence or no obscuring fence, just no fence shall be in that corner clearance area. And then off the last minute meeting, or last, the last meeting, on page five, item A, got rid of the language that requires people applying for fence permits to provide the survey. It just says now, "The Village of Romeo shall not be responsible for the enforcement of any agreement between property owners in respect of fences, nor shall the village be responsible for the determination of location of any fence," period.
How are you doing? I have one thing. So we had spoken a bunch, I mean, not a bunch of times, a few times about corner lots. So page four, obviously, subsection four, and that the "both streets" language is still there.
Say that again, Andrew, I couldn't hear you.
Page four.
Yep.
Number four.
Number four, yep.
"Its corner lots, fences may be erected with inside and rear yards and along the front building line, non-obscuring decorative fences with a height not exceed 40 inches are permitted to extend into the front yard on both streets." And I thought we were trying to say that corner lots aren't going to be affected by this and can have six-foot fences.
Yeah, as long as it didn't go past the front.
But this says "both streets."
To extend, so, so it should say, "Non-obscuring decorative fences with a height not to exceed 40 inches are permitted to extend into the front yard."
Yes.
Period.
On both streets.
Right.
I think we were talking, corner lots weren't going to be considered to have two fronts.
Right.
Just the one front on the addressed street. So should we eliminate the "on both streets" part of that?
To then, period, after yard.
Yard, front yard.
We're eliminating that, correct?
I think that's what we discussed.
Yeah, we agreed to it.
I have no objection.
I mean, that's my only thing that I, that's not lined out yet that I, that we had talked about. Other than that, I'm good with everything I think.
You good?
I'm good.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Our building official is here, and he and I discussed that there might be a few more items in this fence ordinance that we might want some clarification on.
Okay.
So Mike, do you mind coming up and help explaining what some of those items are? Okay. I got a copy of it right here.
One of the things I wanted to bring up was something that we had kind of discussed a little bit at the last meeting is, when you have a corner lot, a lot of times what you'll have is, or if you're off an alley, you'll have your rear yard abutting somebody's whole side yard. And there's cases where you could have somebody's whole driveway along your whole rear yard and then your driveway be a foot away, we know where the pavement is, come up your driveway from a fence. If you allow privacy there, it's not only that the fence is there bumping your door trying to get in, but I was wondering if they wanted to try to put some language in those circumstances, not to follow a full setback like you would the house, but like an accessory structure where we have five foot off the property line or even three foot. Give it some kind of a buffer so you don't pull up your driveway and somebody decides that they want to put a fence up right now and sometimes it could be just, they don't get along with the neighbors, say, "I'm going to put a fence up right there." You know what I'm saying? And there are situations like that in the village where you, you don't want to hurt somebody either.
So that, that would apply to potentially some side yards then also.
Yes, and basically-
Are you allowed to put a driveway now if you were to put in a new driveway? Are you allowed to put it on the fence, on the property line?
A driveway could go on either side. We don't have anything regulating that or how far off that line it could be right now.
There's nothing to push the improvement away from the line.
Right, it could, you know, especially if you have a lot of the rear load garages, there in a lot of the village, and that are already existing.
Right.
Without fences. Say that neighbor today decides, well, I want to put, when, we could put a fence right now, the way it's written, right down that whole side yard, all the way right to the front of the house with a forefoot, then come across the front of the house. I'm just saying, when they abut a driveway to an adjacent neighbor, I was wondering if you should have some language in there where you keep it back a certain amount where you can at least open a car door when you get in and out. There are situations like that, and there's one, I think it's on Harriet, where you come along the alley, that whole side's okay, but when you go along that rear yard, it goes to that next side street, but then again, like I had mentioned, you're going along somebody's side yard that would be that person's rear yard. I think there should be something kind of looked at and some illustrations can be looked at, put into the ordinance with illustrations. So I was just going to ask if we could maybe just, I hate to do this, table this to just another month, maybe try to give us another little bit more time for some-
I don't think there's any rush to it. I would agree, if we feel that, or you feel that more language is needed to protect or something that's more enforceable, then let's take the time needed.
Yes, that's-
Are you talking a foot, two foot, three, I mean?
Well, that's the thing, I can only do what the planning commission sees fit. I don't want to just utter a hasty decision, let's tonight just say, "Let's make it three foot where you figure, wait a minute, we should have made it six or six might be too far." I think it should be something that kind of looked at, thought about. I would feel at least three feet, at least you could open a car door and get out, and you don't want to put it to where you hinder somebody from maintenance on their lawn either.
Jim, Ms. Karen, do you know if there's any language like that, you've seen like that?
Um, I can't think of anything, but I can look around at some other communities that are-
That's a sticky situation, when you think about it. Because now you're telling someone they can't, you got three-footed property on the other side of your fence.
Right.
That you're going to have to go out and around and maintain or the other people just acquire it, you know, and then you've lost property.
Well, I actually had one that happened in Washington Township, but their ordinance, you cannot put fences into your front yard. They have to stop at the side yard front of the house. So when it, would be depending, if you have one house, it might be set back further than the other, you'd take the most restrictive. So if that fence stops alongside that house, we had one where a lady put one in right on the property line, all the way down, and she was getting into her 90s, and the person next door called me out, well, like I told them, and I, if I take and give a 90-year-old lady a ticket and you go to court, what do you think is going to happen? A judge is going to probably tell me right out of that courtroom. So I talked to her family and I said, you know, I hope she lives forever, but she was pretty frail even getting over the lawn, but I said, "If, so when your mom moves, at that point, I'm going to probably have to take action." Well, they did call me about eight months later and said that she moved to a facility and they moved the fence out of the way without me, but I'm just showing that it does cause some hardships for people. And I got to laugh too because when I went and talked to her, the neighbor was Italian, so Italian, but she doesn't know, so she says, "They're Italian, and you know how they destroy and destroy and destroy things?" I started laughing, I'm sitting there going, "Yes, ma'am." So, yeah, but that turned out real nice because, you know, it, it worked itself out eventually, but just to show you that, that could become a real hardship there.
Mr. Barmerito, did I hear you ask for illustrations to go along with?
Well, yeah, sometimes they'll put illustrations in an ordinance to help when you're looking at it.
Well, I think that's a good idea, so.
Yeah. Yeah, if there's a driveway also, then they would still have to maintain that 20, 20, 20 setback.
Twenty, exactly, that's good.
Vision, so.
Absolutely, that's just going to still be in there. And the nice thing about illustrations, several ordinances that I've read from other municipalities, they will, and Karen, you know how you put illustrations on a lot of them too, and it really helps when you do some illustrations with it because it helps clarify. I'd like to take a, maybe a workshop or if a couple people could drive around and try to look at some of these scenarios and maybe, you know, everybody on the planning could just want to drive around the village a little bit and you'll see some of these scenarios I'm talking about and then maybe figure what you think would be a good thing to recommend for that setback for that fence and how we want to do that side yard.
If you know some of the addresses or locations, could you email someone to get it out to us?
Yeah, I could probably send some email to, I don't have the exact addresses off the top of my head, but I could almost drive you to every one right now.
Yeah, and we could go take a look.
Because even, you know-
Send them to Cindy, I will, send them to Cindy.
I could get them to Cindy and Cindy could get them to everybody. I can give her addresses and you can drive around and, that was like the one that we had along the side along Fremont there, you know, how, there's some, there's some gray areas about how the side yard works. So that's why I'm asking, you know, again, for another adjournment before we do anything and get some more language looked at.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, so-
Motion to table till next month? Pardon? Motion to table till next month?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to table this till next month.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion to table further discussion of the fence ordinance until next month.
All support?
Uh, Justin Parker. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Uh, we move on to flag pole language update.
Yeah. I, I bothered to go look at Home Depot's site tonight, and their 20-foot flag pole was 246 inches. Okay. And we're saying they can't install that because it's 20 feet. And the only thing available on the market is 20 feet, six inches, period. So we've got a slight problem if a 20-foot standard off-the-rack 20-foot pole can't be installed. I mean, you can, anyone who wants to can, you know, go check Home Depot's site, it's 246 inches, that's just the way it is. So the 20 feet doesn't quite work there. And we've, we've also said that you can't put this thing if it's going to fall over on the neighbor's property. But boy, people plant trees and do all types of things that would fall over in their neighbor's property. There are houses that would actually fall over in their neighbor's property. I have some real issues with that. I thought we had at one point talked about the fact, if the neighbor didn't object, as long as it was, didn't we have a setback requirement or something like, where the bill, well, you can't, I thought we had talked about the fact you couldn't put it into the building setback, but you could put it anywhere out in the yard or whatever you wanted. And I know that's, what's written here is not the way I remember it, so I'm bringing those items up. I also know that we, we're talking about limiting information on these things. There are people out there who want to put up, oh, you can call them flags because some people would call them flags and I would call them offensive, and I'm not quite sure how we would, you're getting into free speech things.
When does a flag become a sign?
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, yeah. It's, if someone wants to put up a, oh, I don't want to discuss some of the local or national political people's paraphernalia, but how, how in the world do we decide that? And I'm positive that we can't. A court would tell us we can't. So I have, I'd like to see that flag's displaying information that meets the definition of sign, require a sign permit. I think we're just biting off something that we can't even begin to enforce. I think we should take it out. I also think that our limitation should be, as long as it's not in any of the building setback requirements, they can put it anywhere in their yard they want. And I would tell you that a 20-foot flag pole is actually 20 feet, six inches, and it will show that on the manufacturer's sheets. I'm a real pain. Sorry, I hate this ordinance, in case you can't tell. Those are my comments.
Comments on those comments from anybody?
I have some.
Okay.
Um, the, so for the flag pole height, I can look at that again. Is that just height of the materials or height when installed?
The way this is written, it says including foundation. So you've got this piece of metal that's 246 inches long, and by definition, you just look at it, it's, it's bigger than what you can install. So unless you're going to take a saw out there and cut off the bottom six inches, you can't put the damn thing up.
But how far does it go into the ground?
But it says, what it says here includes the foundation, the footing.
I think that's-
This is what's, what's written here, including footings or some such thing here.
My assumption is that was part of the-
Okay, the maximum height of the freestanding flag pole, including the foundation.
Mike's, Mike's, the way I read that was the part that leaves the ground.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's not what it says here. It says, it's including the foundation.
Okay.
Or if we want to, if you want to say excluding the foundation, then we're fine. You just have to change the word including to excluding and-
20 feet from the finished grade.
Yeah, it'd be fine.
From grade, not from the foundation, not including the-
Yeah, because the foundation's below the ground too.
From the finished grade.
Then you'd be, you'd probably be down, Mike, what would we be, about an 18-foot flag pole then, these things go about two feet in the ground?
That's not enough.
Three feet in the ground?
I would still trust that, there's some-
Okay, so we're getting down to what, 16 feet or?
No, not 16 feet, but 42 is a code for frost uplift, and you could have a frost uplift on a piece of concrete that's less than 42 in the ground if you can have sheer to it. However, again, there's, there's a bunch of, Karen, contact today and, but from my attention, there are some ASC and the standards on flag poles.
Okay.
And there's quite a bit, I mean, you know, the bend in moments, the shear and all the other criteria that goes with it. I guess, and actually, in a building code, it addresses flag pole, but they don't give you a design standard, they direct it to the ASTM, I forget which one, Karen or-
Um, they, it's, it's that actually that you have in your hand, it's the N-A-A-M-M, the National American Architectural Metal Manufacturers Guide.
Guide specifications for designs of metal flag poles. With the code book, it just gets you right into this standard, like they do a lot of ASTM, but there, there is engineering standards that are required for flag poles, and that's why I don't know if there's just a generic where we say two foot, I know at 20 foot in the air with lateral pressures against it, that thing will just take off just like a ladder. I don't think you have enough. And then again, the footing size comes into play too. If you have a 12-inch diameter or you have a 24-inch diameter and you're at, say, 24, 30, you're grabbing a lot more, which time you increase your width goes along with the depths too.
Good.
Yeah, so, you know, there, it's, I was just, I just got this piece, this document, you know.
Mike, does a table exist for these flag poles that would say, at this diameter, it must be, you know, so far into the ground? I mean, it seems like it's, we're making it more complicated than it should be.
And guess what, when you get into different types of steel, I'm just wondering where changes too. And then the other thing they worry about is the type of material and what's around it, you ground for rot. It's a different point of engineering standards are required, I guess I could pass this.
No, don't do that.
No. It's not good.
So I agree, the wording should probably change for the height and how it's written. I would agree with that. As far as the sign, if it's defined as a sign, I don't know if-
That sign language mirrors our current sign ordinance, where it addresses you, if you have a flag that is a sign, and by definition, a sign is, you, your flag is advertising your business somehow, whether it's a flag that says "open" or so-and-so's business, that's considered a sign.
So when is a, a political flag, okay, when does that become a sign?
I would say that falls into a free speech category. You're showing support for a candidate that's separate from a sign advertising businesses or services. That's kind of the, the village's definition of a sign.
Some of gas stations or anywhere out in our industrial district, I would almost see the company flags on the poles, so how are we going to tell someone out in industrial district they can't have a-
I S O 2000.
Well, you're not saying that you can't have it, but if someone, you know, if-
I understand, they got to pull a permit.
They just need to pull a sign permit because you're, you're advertising your business, you know?
Okay. I'm not against that. If it's a sign, it's a sign, you got to pull a permit.
Okay. Location. This is written so that you can, you cannot put it any closer to your lot line than the height of it. Is that correct?
Right. And the purpose of that language was, we don't want it falling into the right-of-way or the street or driveway.
I thought we discussed if, as long as it was within the building envelope, is that the right phrase?
I don't remember, I wasn't for that, that language.
The building envelope?
No, the, the setback for the flag pole. If it's installed to spec or manufacturer's recommendation, professionally, it's maintained, there shouldn't be an issue.
I, I agree with that synopsis.
Yeah. Another thing I didn't see, I know we're limiting the height residential, office, commercial, there's no height restriction in the industrial, is that correct?
That was asked to be removed, so that's why it's not in that chart.
I remember that. And then, basically, all the height and flag square footage isn't going to maintain the same then?
The, well, so the, um, the flag size square footage changed because according to that guide that I just handed Mike, they have a separate set of how big the flag should be based on the height, and I figured if we're going to be referencing this standard, then the flag size to height, to pole height, needs to match this standard as well in our ordinance. So that did change if we want to go with this standard. Um, I'm sorry, what was your question, aside from that?
Just the height and everything was going to maintain the same between the districts. Is that, I would think someone in like the office district that has a decent-sized lot that wants to put a taller flag on Main Street than someone that has a smaller lot in a residential neighborhood, I don't, why would we restrict the height outside of the R1 to the same, the same height?
Right. So do you want, guys want to increase it to 30?
The higher you go, the more, and it's got to come. So you're taking lots in the village, some-
That's what we were just saying, I don't, I don't agree with that setback.
Right. Or the height of the pole setback?
Yeah, I don't agree with that.
Okay, and Home Depot says the classic 21, they refer to it as a classic, you guys can do the same thing. The classic 21-foot sectional flag pole, which is the only thing they've got in stock, and it comes with a flag that's 25 square feet, which is bigger than four by six, that's what they supply with it, or that's how the kit is chipped, which means we don't-
It's part of the manufacturer's recommendation for them.
Pardon?
It would be in the manufacturer's recommendation then, if they're supplying it.
Right.
I would assume they recommend it.
It says minor modification to square footage requirement may be permitted by the building official if appropriate structural analysis is provided. Number six.
I'm just looking at the stars on 24 feet that say, "Or to manufacturer recommendation."
Yeah.
All right, let's go through this.
Okay.
One at a time, one through seven, change what we want. One last, let's do it. All right, number one. All new freestanding flag poles shall require a building permit and the materials used must be manufactured specifically for flag usage. Flags displaying information that meets the definition of a sign will require, require a sign permit and must meet requirements of the sign ordinance. A plot plan showing the location of a flag pole shall be submitted along with product specifications or analysis sealed by a professional engineer licensed by the state of Michigan that demonstrates compliance with the Michigan Building Code and N-A-A-M-M-F-P- compliance with the Michigan Building Code and N-A-A-M-M-F-P one zero zero one as referenced in section sixteen oh nine of the M B C.
The only thing I would see there is including maybe a reference to the sign ordinance number.
Sure.
Sign ordinance?
Yeah, or it talks about flags displaying information that meets the definition of a sign. I think we should just reference that definition or reference the ordinance number so that they know where to go.
Pardon?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, number two. Freestanding flagpoles must be located within the property boundaries. The property owner shall determine the location of property lines and verify that the flagpole being installed is within those property lines. A, flagpoles cannot conflict with parking drives or pedestrians' circular circulation areas. B, flagpoles cannot conflict with corner clearance or be an obstruction of view for safety. See sections four six dash four three eight and four six dash one nine three. Comments, complaints, alterations? Anybody?
So by saying flagpole cannot conflict with parking drives, is that, basically, this can't be in them? It's not saying you have to be setback?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we're accepting that then, right? Number three, maximum height of the freestanding flagpoles, including foundation, cannot exceed the maximum listed below. In any case, the height of any flagpole should not be greater than the distance to the nearest property line.
That's the, that's the part I disagree with.
I'm saying you should take out the word including and make it excluding.
Or go from grade.
Or from grade, twenty feet, thirty feet, whatever it is from grade.
Either way, I mean, actually...
I would go with from grade.
Okay, the maximum height of the freestanding flagpole, uh...
Excluding?
No, we're gonna say from grade, is that correct?
Yeah. Freestanding flagpole from grade cannot exceed the maximum listed below.
Okay.
And then, then that next sentence, I, I disagree. If someone wants a...
I, I also totally disagree with that next sentence. If you wanna put a limitation on it, we can say that they, they can't get into the... Mike, what's the proper phrase for what, you can only, this is your...
Building envelope.
Your building envelope. It has to be in the building envelope, but, and you can't put it in the setbacks.
Buildable envelope.
The buildable envelope within the buildable setbacks. And the residential in the village is nine off the sides, twenty-five front and forty-foot rear. That's where I might have a problem, because if somebody wanted to put it in the rear yard, you don't want to make it come forty foot back, because the house might be set right at forty, that kind of the backyard if you had to put the...
Same thing in the front yard. Most houses are set back to that limit right now.
Right, that's what I'm saying, it, you'd be violating your ordinance right off, right out of the gate, right, if you're putting it in there, so...
So if we just take...
If you have a twenty-five-foot setback and you say it's in the building envelope, that setback's already out of the building envelope.
So if we just take the sentence out?
Yeah.
Then we don't have a problem?
Exactly.
So we take out that, we take that sentence out in total?
I'd have to hear it again, I'm sorry.
The sentence is, in any case, the height of a flagpole shall not be greater than the distance to the nearest property line. So that, so then, number three would just be, maximum height of the freestanding flagpoles from...
Grade.
Grade cannot exceed the maximum listed below.
And then we would take out the next sentence?
And then that sentence is gone, not there.
All right, number four. A maximum of one freestanding flagpole per parcel may be permitted in residential and CBD districts with a maximum height of twenty feet.
Jim, real quick, before we go off of that table, can we look at changing the heights for the office and commercial to thirty?
Okay.
And then the flag size will change accordingly.
Accordingly, yes.
So, we're gonna change that to thirty feet?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right, number four. Maximum of one freestanding flagpole per parcel may be permitted in residential and CBD districts with a maximum height of twenty feet.
And twenty feet from grade, if you want to.
Can we eliminate the twenty feet from there, because it's already determined in section three?
Sure.
Maximum per parcel districts.
So we take out...
So a period.
With a maximum.
Yeah, can we take out from the word with and then the rest of it?
Yeah.
Okay. Number five, a maximum of three freestanding flagpoles per parcel may be permitted in the office, commercial, and industrial districts. That's cool with everybody?
Yeah.
Number six, the maximum square footage of any number of flag, flags per pole shall not exceed the recommended square footage listed above. Minor modifications to square footage requirements may be permitted by the building official if the appropriate structural analysis is provided.
You comfortable with that, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay.
Number seven, all freestanding flagpoles shall be maintained in good condition, free of significant corrosion, tears, fraying, peeling paint or finish, and other damage or deterioration.
I like it.
I do, I.
We agree with that. Although, you know, who's gonna, my flagpole's rusting twenty feet up, am I going up there and painting it?
You get a lift, get a lift, search in.
I don't think that's gonna happen.
You put a, put a ladder up against it and climb it.
Yeah.
Cut it down, there you go.
Okay, so those are all the changes, right?
Right.
We're done. So we're gonna table this till next time again?
See the final, final written and send it on.
All right.
I'll make a motion to table this till next month with the recommended changes.
Mr. Webb seconded. Okay, motion before us to table the flagpole ordinance until next month. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Uh, D, under unfinished business, permitted uses in the CBD.
C, one C.
We are? Oh, I'm sorry, I started to read that. Off-street parking ordinance.
Um, so the, we reviewed this last month, um, where the village has understood that campers and other recreational vehicles can be stored in the rear yard so long as they're behind the principal building on some kind of paved pad, but not in the driveway, where the actual ordinance says, as long as it's behind the established building line, it can be in your driveway. Um, we reviewed this last month, the planning commission said, let's keep the language as is, um, but the clerk asked if the planning commission could reconsider reviewing this again.
What is, what is the clerk, or what would they like to see?
They would like to see language that states that the recreational vehicles be out of view from the driveway. So behind the rear of the building as opposed to, or be, be behind the building and that placed in the driveway, where it can be seen from the street.
I'm against that.
Yeah, I don't see the reason for that.
There's way too, there's a lot of people in the village who park their campers during the season, okay?
Mm-hmm.
In the driveway.
Yeah.
And if we're gonna suddenly tell these people, nope, you're gonna go out and spend twenty, thirty thousand dollars to somehow put it in their backyard, and I can think of one within eyesight of where we are right now, where there is a camper in that, or...
That's actually in the front yard.
Well, it's, it's, it's there, so what?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's, they've been doing that for as long as I've lived on Wonder Lane. And I, I don't have a problem with it.
It's not possible for everybody to move into their backyard and get their RV off the street.
And when we went through the list of recreational vehicles, it wasn't just a motorhome camper that we're speaking of, but recreational vehicles, that's watercrafts or four-wheelers.
They, they moved from having a camper to having their snowmobiles parked there.
Yeah.
And I, personally, that's their business, not mine.
If it's in working order, it's plated, it's...
You got it.
It's not a storage facility.
I understand the clerk's concern, but I don't think that we should change anything. Pardon? Sure. Wait, you ask if I minded, the answer is yes, I do. Don't bother.
Public comment is closed.
Who is that person?
I'm joking.
So the concern is, when our officers went out to enforce the ordinance, that if you look at, do you guys have, okay, so the highlighted area where it says, no storage of a motor vehicle or recreational vehicles may be allowed within a required front yard or the established building line, whichever is more restrictive, or required side, or required rear. So essentially, you can only park it behind the, the house, the front line, and it can be in your driveway if it's behind that, but we have, but then you also have your side yard. So sometimes your driveway's right next to that lot line. And so then, a lot of the people are pulling them in and they're going, okay, well, now they're not within the side yard setback, so now you're right there on the lot line. And we have people who have fences that can't pull them past the front of their house. So then we say, okay, well, now you have a, too bad you have a ticket now. So do we want, I don't feel like the community wants to do away with being able to park in their driveway, or park their vehicle. I think they want that. But I don't feel that the ordinance addresses that. I think, I feel like it restricts it more. So that's where the concern is. The officers are going, okay, well, if that's the case, then this person's gotta go, and that person's gotta go, and that person's gotta go. And I go, well, I don't think that's, I don't think that's what we necessarily want, unless it is.
If someone's been putting their camper in their driveway in that corner lot, and they, and they've been doing that for years and years and years, the adoption of our ordinance, I would say they're grandfathered in.
I would say I'm enforcing an ordinance of what it says.
And I don't agree with that.
Well...
I'm, I'm...
I wish I could say that, but being the person who has to enforce the ordinances, I have to enforce what this says. And that's why I'm asking you, or adjust it, so that I don't have to enforce that, if that's not what we want. And there are, how does it address corner lots? Because there are, I can think off the top of my head, two places that have corners that have their recreational vehicles, and if that's a front yard, they are also not supposed to be there. Where would we allow that to be? I, I don't, I mean, you interpret it better. That's the concern. I'm gonna enforce an ordinance.
So the current, the current language is the no storage, so skipping a line, but no storage of motor vehicles, I'm reading the highlighted. No storage of motor vehicles or recreational vehicles may be allowed within a required front yard or established building line, whichever is more restricted. So that's the current language, yes?
This is the current, yes, ordinance, yes.
Right, so that's not a suggested change, that's how it looks right now.
Yes.
Current ordinance right now is saying they can't do what they're doing.
Then we should take that sentence out.
This is, that's what I'm asking you.
Okay.
I think the reason, where the confusion is, is we think that the yellow is a suggested change.
No, I'm highlighting what I specifically want you to, I'm drawing your attention to.
Right. So that's what I'm, I'm just trying to clarify that.
This is what our ordinance says currently on the books.
Okay, so we need to take that sentence out?
Or adjust it however you would want to see it.
What we need to do is take that sentence out, just remove it.
I'm all for the proper working condition part, though, and plated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't want stuff being stored forever.
Yeah, my understanding was always it had to be behind the front of the house, but...
So where do you, where do you want it, what will it say?
So the last sentence...
The yellow.
So, I was saying, it will say, no motor vehicle shall be kept or stored in any residential zoning district unless it, it shall be in operating condition and properly licensed or located inside a building. So should it say...
You wouldn't even need a building.
Well, you need to...
Or if it's not, if it's not in operating condition or licensed...
Then it needs to be, the other issue we have...
Look at, if we're gonna eliminate this, are we gonna get people parking right in front of the house?
Right, right to the sidewalk, yep.
Or, yeah, right, right across the front of the house.
The other issue is, it's not included in here, the definition of storage was twenty-four hours. That means you can't keep it over winter. It, it means you can't keep it for more than twenty-four hours. I don't feel that's what the people do and want. So I think we need to somehow address that specifically, whether it's to all recreation or just...
Campers, motorhomes.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the recreational vehicle definition...
Includes everything.
Goes quite deep, and it leaves some stuff out also.
So I feel that the definition of storage in this portion and where you want it, do you want it behind the house line? Then say that, because if what you just took out means it could come right to the sidewalk now.
Yeah, I would, I would think it needs to stay behind the front of, the front, address part of the house.
If you're on a, you know, we could walk outside, look over there and say, you know, that's where they parked their thing.
It's well outside of the building line. I mean, that house is a hundred and something feet off the street.
Yeah, I mean, the setback is huge.
I'm talking about the, the one over in the corner of Morton.
Yeah, right here.
It's right there.
Right.
Right here, it's right there. The one that overhangs the, that looks like it's gonna fall?
Yeah, right, this yellow language says it can't be in the building, inside of the non-building, buildable area, which it is not. It's way off the line. Like, way off the line.
They pull in off from Minot.
Morton.
The one I'm talking about, they pull in off of Minot.
Minot. I'm building a road this way now.
But it's a corner lot.
It's a corner lot.
And so essentially, they're in their front yard, and that's what I, we could address corners also.
And the guy at the other end of that block is my neighbor. He, he has multiple cars, they're all licensed, they're all operating, and that, those parking pads have been there for sixty years.
So if it's a side...
You're gonna tell him that he can't park his car, that where people have been parking it since it's always been?
It's plated, that's, that's excluded.
Yeah, that's, if it's licensed and plated, this is recreational vehicles, not cars.
They also park their recreational vehicles there.
So if it's on the corner, side of a corner, then President Posnian, excuse me, we need to define that to allow that.
I recognize...
If it's behind the front of the, same with the, we're talking with the fencing, behind the front where it's addressed. It's in the side.
Yes, it's in the side.
Then I don't see an issue with it.
I don't either.
But could we just spell that all out so that when an officer goes to enforce an ordinance, it's actually what's there?
Could, could, Megan, could you talk to Karen and get us the recommended language so we can look at it rather than us trying to wrestle it out as a group?
Could you list at least for her, where do you want it to come to?
So, so we don't want vehicles parked in the street. We don't want recreational vehicles parked in the street for, I would say, where they place storage.
You can't park in the street overnight anyway, so we're taking care of that.
I mean, you can call and get a leeway, I mean...
But that's not overnight.
Someone's loading up their camper for a weekend and they're parked there on Friday.
But we need to define storage for on-property storage. How long do you want that to be? Do you want it to be a limit at all? Do you want them, I winter mine somewhere else, but some people don't.
Right.
I think there are numerous ones in the village where they bring it home during the season.
Yep.
And then they go, take it off to the storage yard for the winter.
Right, that's what I do, so I'll have it home, I'll have my camper home for four to six months, and then it's gone the other half.
Or vice versa. Some people take it out for the season to where they're gonna be using it, and then they store it at home through the winter.
So do you want that to be take, that, how long do you want it stored? A limit if at all? Where do you want it parked? Behind the house line or not, or no limit there at all? And what do you want on corners?
I'll probably end up sometimes having to enforce some of this too, but the thing I wanna bring up is, in the driveways... up is, in the driveways, you wanna see if you could keep them a certain distance back from the street, because if, a lot of people, what they'll do is they'll have them right up to the sidewalk. Some cities have it where you gotta be eight foot, because they don't wanna stop people from having them. But they'll say, if you could be like eight foot back, that way when you're coming out the car, you don't hit a pedestrian, same thing that comes into clear vision, should kinda be looked at, so you're not parked right up to the sidewalk.
I guess that would apply then past even recreational vehicles, I mean, it could be a van or anything parked within that.
Your car can do it right now, you know, and you have a two-car garage.
Car, van, or whatever.
Exactly.
It also...
And you got a lot of area in the southwest section of the village where a lot of those houses are all front-load garages, they don't have anywhere to get to a side yard, and you restrict them from having these vehicles stored on-site. I'm just saying, something just to think about, a little further, they should, you know, if you're allowing them in the front yard, that's fine, but I'm wondering if something's gonna sit for a whole season to be right up to the edge of the sidewalk. But like you said, a car could do it now, and you're always taking that risk of hitting a kid on a bike coming through that you don't see, or pedestrian, so.
Cars move, so it's not stored.
It's moving all the time, they're not as high, but I mean, I think for a full camper with high sides, you know, that are like a box, you're doing a whole box right there, so. Boats, you know, when you got the tongue standing there in the V, you could kinda see through there a little more. I don't, I'm just throwing that out there, because some municipalities have a setback. I think Sterling Heights does, I remember years ago, they had it where you had to be eight foot. Clinton Township had it, and then they made it to where you have to go in the side yards only, like, you know, behind. Washington has it to, they have large and small recreation vehicles, and they had definitions of what large would be to small, where you could have the smaller ones in the front yards, larger had to go between. I'm just saying it's some food for thought before we make a hasty decision.
Yeah.
And then, you know, like you said, and like Bill said, there's people had them forever, and we have one right up on the hill now. Is that bothering anybody? No.
No.
It's been up there forever, I could think of it, and there's a lot of them. So I'm not against it whatsoever, just I'm saying a little more food for thought for safety, that's all.
Where are we?
We'll work on it. You do want us to work on it?
Yes, that's, we're requesting some language. For us as a committee, our group to write language is extremely difficult. If there's something for us to, to say yes or no to, it's much faster, and you won't be listening to the lightbulb discussion for another four months.
We would like your input more.
So, we're gonna eliminate this in the yellow, right?
Well, no.
It's gonna get broken up.
We're gonna table this, and allow our planner to redraft language with the assistance of the president and/or clerk.
But we are going to add some language about setback from the sidewalk, et cetera, is that correct? Just so I know what's...
Address corner lots.
Address corner lots, address the definition of storage. Do we want to limit it to any timeframe, or do we just wanna eliminate that aspect of it?
I mean, I understand the aspect of not wanting off-season storage of something for four months and sitting in the same spot, I, I get it. So I guess it can be proposed, we don't have to accept it. Right?
The camping season runs from April to November.
Yeah. So I'm saying four months.
Pardon?
Four months. You don't want it stored in the yard for four to five months? I don't know. A big tarred wall.
April, May, June, July, August, September, October.
Well, I'm saying not moving in one place.
No, I mean, I, I, okay. If someone's bringing it home every weekend or every other weekend, then we're getting into, should, is it any of our business that they wanted it stored?
Yeah, I guess it doesn't really bother me.
For the next five months?
Right.
This thing?
Yeah, I'm not really sure, that's your yard.
I agree. Is one month enough for you to... It is? Okay.
Cool.
So, let's make a, I'll make a motion, and table this discussion for one month.
Support.
Did you second?
Yeah, support.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we move on to permitted uses in the CBD.
Let's get you a comfy chair, so you don't have to keep getting up and down with a table or a desk or something.
So this is some notes and, or notes from the last meeting for this outdoor merchandising and sidewalk sales section. I talked to the clerk about our discussion, and I brought back some information. There was a discussion on, you know, there are businesses in the village where either their seating is right up against the building, or it's to the sidewalk, do we wanna have a specific standard? And establishments that serve liquor are the ones that definitely have to be up against the building, because there has to be an extension of their building. But, so that's usually the businesses that will be right up against, have their outdoor seating right up against the building, whereas places that aren't serving alcohol, they can either be closer to the street, where someone has to walk between the patio area and the actual business entrance. So any, any, you know, the concern of pedestrians are walking right up against the street, that's required if they wanna have outdoor seating, because they're serving alcohol. So that's why that's, that's why there's a variation between differences. The clerk said that she would like outdoor seating to remain seasonal, specifically for just snow removal, and, you know, the likelihood that businesses might still be having patrons out there in our winter months. However, recognizing that many establishments have events in the late fall and early spring, she's suggesting that we keep the language seasonal, outdoor seating, and defining season as from March through November. The last meeting suggested to change item number four, to include seating in an active alley is prohibited. The clerk's concerned about having seating in a rear inactive alley, said the purpose of these areas is to allow pedestrians to move from the rear parking areas to sidewalks and the main downtown area. And I asked her if the village would enter, would be interested in charging to have these outdoor seating areas, and she said that that's not something that the village wants to pursue at the moment. But I did look up and see what other communities were doing. Many communities that have mainstream outdoor dining, they usually charge either, they have like a set fee that maybe, there's an initial large fee when you first apply, and then there's still an annual fee that you have to apply for every year. Sometimes they're charged by the square footage annually, but, I mean, the fees range anywhere from 25 to 500, plus sometimes, you know, additions of those amounts, depending on if you have to renew every 90 days, or 90 to 60 days is what a lot of communities had.
I would say my comments on the active alley and rear seating and the fact that it's for ingress and egress through those areas, I would say that that's what the five foot's for.
What was that, your...
I would say that the ingress egress through alleys is used, that's why that rear alley exists. I would say that that's why there's the five-foot rule, you have to keep a five-foot pad.
Yeah.
That's specifically what that's for, for me.
Yeah. So I don't know.
I mean, then you're, yeah.
The seasonal thing, I know Billy, we talked about, you brought that up last meeting with regards to igloos or...
Right.
And stuff like that, I don't know why we would limit, limit that, I mean, the ones that have the fencing up leave it up year-round, now it seems anyways, and everyone seems to maintain their snow removal and with them up. It's been that way for the last couple of years, I believe.
At least.
Yeah.
And they don't take them down.
Nobody takes them down. There's one of them taken down.
So year-round, no, no definition on seasonal, or just remove seasonal?
Yeah, that's what we talked about.
We talked about removing the word seasonal.
Yeah.
I see we, on, number three, we've highlighted, "All goods and services shall be placed or kept so that..." Yeah, okay, that's all right.
The minimum five foot.
Right.
From the street. So are we saying there that we want to see it uniform, and everything stay up to the building, and maintain five foot from there? I don't think that's a bad suggestion. I get to see it coming to a point where everyone's gonna have the seating now, and you've got the bars that are up close, and then the next guy's out away, now you're creating a jog.
So, so, I mean, so they have to walk around, they have to look at the stuff. I don't have a problem with that. I really don't. And I, I can tell you in the rest of the world that I've been in, it's, it's very common.
I mean, yeah, I've been places also, where you walk right through the patios where people are eating and...
Yep, I've done that.
But I just think it's more of an obstruction. We're not, we don't have huge sidewalks that have large areas.
We don't have huge crowds of people, we've been...
Well, but when we do, that's where I think it's gonna become a bottleneck and become an issue. Month of October, beach fest, when we have the large crowds, and we're gonna have seating here, seating here, and you're creating bottlenecks, and the people are stepping out into traffic to get around. I think it's, I personally feel, keeping it maintained to the building, five foot away.
John has his, away, right?
Yes.
And I don't have a problem with that. I don't have him, I don't have a problem with him having his coffee table in the, in the inactive alley.
How wide is that low apron, the low sidewalk? Is it five feet wide?
The step down, I think is probably closer to four.
Three or four.
But then you add another foot onto that, and you've got a five foot, right?
Right.
Does that, what do we define that step as?
Right, so it's...
You know, it's more of a trip hazard.
Is he meeting it anyway, he's just got a gap through his without a solid fence? Whereas...
Exactly.
The youngsters in the office have a solid fence that you cannot pass through.
They have to have that.
I understand why they have to have it, that's just...
See, even currently, he has five foot from his building to where it is, potentially.
Have we run this to the DDA to ask them, do you guys, who, whose only function in life is to talk about the downtown, have a comment on this? I mean, the, the DDA has no other, nothing else.
I see what you're saying, from that to the current parking.
There's nothing on the low apron.
That's not a five-foot set, that's not five foot.
But if he moves this way a little bit, he would meet it.
I, I don't agree, I, I...
I don't, it doesn't bother me either way.
I'm not gonna tell John to move his tables.
I'd rather not.
I, I have no problem with it the way it is.
See, I'm looking at it not just as John, just as coffeehouse, I'm looking at it as a uniform, eliminate...
And sometimes uniform is boring.
I'll give you that.
Good.
I, I mean, but it's, it eliminates hazards, bottlenecks, potential, yeah, I, I don't know if we're gonna get anywhere, because then it also, are we still gonna leave in that it's restricted to restaurants, lounges, and similar businesses? Because we currently have a real estate office, a gun shop, a computer store, I mean, we could list all, everyone that's got tables in front of their businesses that are clearly currently in violation of the ordinance as it is.
And, and I was in Marquette a couple of months ago, and there were people who put places to sit, and they put the little advertising thing on, and think out there, 'cause I can go sit while Susan shops.
Yeah.
And I, and I just don't have a problem with it.
And I, I wouldn't be for limiting it to eating establishments if it was uniform, because once you get here, 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 it's, it's just, I could see it becoming a headache to walk through town.
Hopefully it will become a headache, and there's a lot of people walking through town, so the businesses can succeed.
Or the people don't come, because it's a headache to walk through town.
I don't think that's...
Yeah. I typically walk, because...
No, go ahead.
Public comment's closed, man.
No, I, I'll yield time to her. Megan, you have a comment? No. We're, we're gonna wrangle about this incessantly, Jim.
I've walked through Florence, Italy, and it's chaos, and it's great.
I walked through Santorini, the same thing, and you, it's...
It's different.
There's food everywhere, yeah, it's different.
It's different, it's a different setup, it's a different flow. It's not, you're limited to this much space of sidewalk before you're stepping out on a 35 mile an hour road, or in between cars that are parked. It's different.
I think people are pretty good at taking care of themselves, I mean, I, I'm just speaking, you know, off the top of my head here, I, you can be too restrictive, too, you know? I'm all in favor of letting people kind of figure them, something's out.
And I, I'd be all for it, every business in town have outdoor seating if they want it, for whatever purpose they need it for, but just not...
That untidy?
Not even untidy, I mean, paint them purple, paint them green, you know, get, you know, on uniform, or what's that?
He wants to keep it to the building edge.
Yeah.
You mean, I should tell my tenant to not paint her front yellow and pink? If it makes her happy, I don't care.
Well, we need to make decisions about this, one way or the other, or table...
Why don't we just take a, a straw vote? I'm, I'm in favor of letting people have it either way.
I'd like to.
And, and Justin doesn't agree, so we, that's, there's two people. Mr. Webb?
I agree. With?
You agree?
With him or me?
With you.
Oh, man.
With the old man, okay. He agrees with the old man.
Me? I understand the merits of keeping it all to the sidewalk, but I don't, I think it's overly restrictive.
I agree with you, Bill.
Billy, are you gonna agree with me, or are you gonna agree with Justin?
I've already lost, so it doesn't matter.
We got past that.
Yeah.
So, if I'm hearing that right, that means you're talking about...
We've had so much talk here.
That's what we're supposed to do.
With so many different ideas, and I don't know the, why the hell we're even talking about.
Okay.
So I guess with that, are we gonna keep it limited to restaurants, lounges, and similar businesses?
No. That, that's my opinion?
No, I'm not opposed to not limiting, I mean, I would be for eliminating the limitation there.
But then they still need to apply for a permit.
Yeah, and, and I'm not opposed to a fee for it.
Never mind.
And I don't think it needs to be annual, once you've put it out there, it's out there.
Does it have on here, uh, insurance?
Yeah, 'cause you need to provide insurance.
If that's a part of the clerk's process, it's not, it's currently not listed in the zoning ordinance. So I don't, I'll have to double-check with Catherine and see what exactly she's asking of them, because if that's, that's part of the application, then it should be also listed in here, if I can double-check.
I'm, I'm not opposed to...
I'm sure the, any, any alcohol establishment that's serving, probably definitely has insurance for that, but anyone else? I don't know.
I'm just thinking, like, a couple of the places that have been listed, they have furniture on it, where they're on state, some of the sticks on it, they follow, they sue the village. No, I want your insurance, and I want you to sign up that the village is not...
Yeah, but they're, they're all gonna sue any, everybody in sight anyhow, Megan, that just...
I mean, yeah, if that's, but if, I mean, it's a very good point, but at that point, you wanna keep it annually, because you need them to provide it.
Yeah.
They need to provide that insurance annually, if that's what we're concerned with, you know?
And I just look at the upkeep of the sidewalks that are obviously in need currently, and if it's a fee, they can go towards, not use for other things, but simply to maintain the downtown sidewalks, then so be it.
Okay. On item five, where we've got those new red letters there, or beyond the width of the individual storefront? I guess that's new verbiage?
Yeah, um, um, the concern was that, uh, business was putting items out for sale, encroaching on the storefront of another business. So if you, if you're permitted, permitted to have an outdoor sale, whenever those occasions come up, your merchandise has to stay in front of your business.
Or could we not add in there something to the effect that, um, without the express, you, you can be extended with the express written permission of the adjoining merchant, uh, and/or affected business? I mean, if Carl wants to put more crap out and the dentist says, "I don't care," that's fine, great, because it, you know, it helps get the kids to be happy and make money and everyone's, the, what I'm suggesting in there, you're, you're being too restrictive. If the neigh- if the neighboring business doesn't care and says that's fine, they can do it. And I think we should provide that exception, rather than saying, "No, it doesn't matter if they don't..." Rather than saying they can't, why don't we say that they can only go beyond it with the express written permission of the adjoining business or property owner, what would...
Proprieter.
Proprieter, okay, then that leaves it vague enough. But we're, we're giving it out here, if the bank doesn't care and the insurance agent doesn't care and Carl wants to put stuff there...
Makes sense.
What, I mean, during sidewalk sales times, all types of people appear out of nowhere that have no interest in, in, in the property.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Yeah.
I agree with that, so...
I, I guess, are we getting into the, uh...
Are we gonna go line by line again?
Pardon? Would you like me to shut up and go on? Well, there's things that are wrong with it, the way this is, is written, and you know, I bothered to read this thing a couple of times and say, "Wait a minute, no, this is not, that's nuts."
Well, let's, uh, get some movement on this, I'll read this line by line and you can add your comments. Nobody has any objections, okay. Number one, no person or business shall use any sidewalk or that space between the sidewalk and curb or any parking area or any area of a road right of way for displaying goods for sale or for any other purpose.
Yep.
We all agree with that, right? Number two, commercial sidewalk sales and outdoor merchandising and promotional events shall be approved by the village clerk, 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 excuse me. Outdoor sales event, uh, outdoor sales events shall be limited to a maximum duration of five days. No establishment shall be allowed to conduct more than three outdoor merchandising events in any year.
I only have one recommendation.
Okay.
After the, the word clerk, I would like "or designate."
After word clerk?
So by the village clerk or designate.
Okay.
It's awfully restricted to one person if you leave it that way.
I didn't hear, I didn't... He's, he, he said he wants, instead of just the word clerk, he wants to put in the word used also, or designate. So it's, the clerk can designate Cindy to... Okay. To, to do that. Alright. Type of stuff.
Okay, that's our only change there, okay. Number three, minor in and out merchandising and services may be permitted by the village clerk, provided that the following standards are observed.
Jim, can we go back, I'm sorry, I, there was, we, we're, we're saying that, that the way this is presented, they can only do three events a year, correct?
Three events, five days each.
Uh, fifteen days a year.
Yeah, and the junk people, my junk teak or Michigan junk, she does far more than that. And I don't have a problem with it. I don't. It's, just think it out, guys, do we really wanna say, "No, you can't do this anymore?" I, I don't, I just don't see it's any of our business.
Does she do it on the sidewalk more, or should you do it in the back parking lot that she owns more?
She does it in her back parking lot and out in front, and that, that sidewalk out in front of her building is hers. It is not public sidewalk.
But to a point.
There's six feet or more, and I'm not sure exactly what, I think it's six feet.
'Cause the back parking lot's not even considered in this, so it's, that stuff is, it's, that's all of them, 'cause this is just sidewalk sales.
And it's, well, it says, and outdoor, it doesn't say quite that, it says, uh, "Commercial sidewalk sales and..."
Oh, you're right, outdoor merchandise.
"Outdoor merchandising and promotional events shall be approved by the village clerk or designate."
Outdoor sales events, yeah.
I'm sorry, we, we just said she can't do that anymore.
Right.
And I'm saying, "No." Absolutely no, that's, it's, you, you, you need to rewrite that, if you're saying it's on her property, she can do what she damn well wants to do back there.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think limiting on the sidewalks.
On the sidewalk, okay, you could say you can only do it fifteen days a year.
Yeah.
That's reasonable, but you're, since we're talking about the whole commercial district, then you've gotta break it down and define.
So you're recommending saying sidewalk sales events should be limited?
Shall be approved by the village clerk or designation, take out the words "and outdoor merchandising and promotional events."
Okay, and the next line, you're taking out outdoor sales events?
That's correct.
And it's limited to...
Do you want to rack the t-shirts out when it's a nice summer day, is that how it would end?
It's, it's on the sidewalk.
I wouldn't think so, but it's on the sidewalk. Yeah.
I think we're trying to promote business in the village and not limit it.
Yeah, I agree.
I wouldn't say it's an event.
It's tough enough to make a living downtown.
I would say a rack out front's an event.
Pardon?
But...
If he wants to put a rack out in front, who cares?
Right. It's within his building envelope, it's within the...
Then you're gonna get, well, then define it as an event.
Right, I get it.
Eliminate it.
But it's on your property, that's different, right? And if you're saying that's her property in the front, same thing with Zach and under his overhang, that's his property. And he wants to put a rack out underneath his overhang...
It's his business.
Yeah, I don't think we have any say if it's not the public use of merchandise, outdoor merchandise, sidewalk sales, oh, that's the ordinance.
I think, I think Zach's...
Permitted use.
Property line is his building. It's just different down at the...
Yeah, which, there's a setback before you walk into his door, he's got it underneath his overhang, there's...
Does he, I, I don't know.
There's a setback, yeah.
Yeah, there's a cutout, there's a four foot cutout.
'Cause I used to own the other two buildings, I know, that's, I paid for that, that so-called public sidewalk, it's actually private property. I will keep quiet for at least a minute. Oh, come on now, time.
Alright, so number two, we're just gonna scratch the whole thing out?
Well, leave, leave the first part, 'cause they have to, they have to be approved, right? Do you want them to be approved?
Commercial sidewalk sales, and we take out the words "and outdoor merchandise and promotional events." So we'll read, "Commercial sidewalk sales shall be approved by the village clerk or designate." Outdoor sales events, then we're gonna take out the rest of it, period.
We're not limiting them.
And we're not limiting it.
Well, that gets back to the pushing a rack out, is that a sales event or what is it?
I'm saying it's none of our business, if he wants to put a rack out, it's his business.
So then, then you, number two, "Commercial sales, sidewalk sales shall be approved by the village clerk if..."
Or designate, period.
Yeah, so, if, but if you leave that in there, that someone wants to push a rack out, define it then.
What criteria is the village clerk gonna use for approval or disapproval?
Yeah, we don't even know.
We, you gotta have some criteria, you can't, she can't just be crabby one day and say, "You can't do that."
Yeah, I agree. Let me see some... I know where your mind is, I see.
Phenomenal, yes. We could, "Commercial sidewalk sales events," you gotta typify a vet.
The, the only thing that, that we've agreed on, "Commercial sidewalk sales shall be approved by the village clerk or designate." And he, he's right, we've got to give some criteria there. Or take it out, period.
I don't wanna do that. I don't want it to be a flea market every day.
Karen, can you, can you think of some verbiage we can...
Well, so, "Commercial sidewalk sales," I don't mind keeping the word "events" in. "Commercial sidewalk sales events shall be approved by the village clerk." Um, "Events shall be limited to a maximum duration of five days," so you can have your stuff out for five days. If you wanna have it out longer, you can reapply and go to the clerk and get approval, would that be okay? There's no limit on how many times you can go to the clerk, but you still, if you're using the public sidewalk to put your stuff out, you still need to get approval from the clerk, there's, we're not camping it at three necessarily.
We have to take out the words "events" and say, "Such sidewalk sales," because we're not trying to...
And then "sales shall be limited to a maximum duration of five days."
It's gonna be "such sidewalk sales," so we understand we're only talking about sidewalk sales, shall be, um, limited to five days, is that what we're saying?
Yeah, or that's what's currently in there.
You just can't say "event," you have to say what we're actually doing there, so it's, we're restricting sidewalk sales and that's the only thing that we're talking about in that sentence. Where are we?
We're still here.
So now, "Such sidewalk sales shall be limited to a maximum duration of five days." And then you're suggesting that the last sentence be removed? "No establishment shall be allowed to conduct more than three outdoor merchandising events in any year." You're suggesting not fifteen days, you just gotta reapply for such, these sidewalk sales?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know, I think I'm with you on that one. I think it, there should be some limit to it.
Well, she doesn't have to approve it.
What's that? Yeah, but then what criteria, now why doesn't she approve it, and then you get into that headache? Is at what point, is it just now an extension of the business and we've got, like, you mentioned a flea market outside on the sidewalks? And then we've got seating all over the place and everyone's got seats and this and that, and now we got racks out there all summer? Tell me how we're gonna walk through town? It's gonna be a mess. If everyone gets on board and starts doing it, 'cause we've just permitted it, well, these are recommendations, then I see it becoming even worse than just the seating everywhere.
Well, let her make the changes and then bring them to us and then next month we'll beat the hell out of it again, so... You know?
You know, I will, from now on, I will, when I make the draft changes, I'll also include a copy of just what's currently existing there so we can kinda really compare. Um, we're obviously eliminating language, adding language, so it kinda gets confusing of what was there in the first place, so we have a reference of what to look at.
I agree.
Alright, so where are we at now? Number three?
We're worried me about to read number three, but it seems to me when we have these discussions, some things are self-evident or should be. At least, for example, the village clerk, clerk's criteria for approving these things. So I have a sidewalk sale, it, I can't block the whole sidewalk with racks. I mean, there should be some approval process, maybe, it depends, you know, uh, what are you doing out there and these are the rules, you can't block the sidewalk, you can't do this, you can't do that. So I think that's something we can write into this, you know, to give the clerk some guidelines as to, you know, what we'd like to see in terms of how that stuff is approved. I mean, just because you have a sidewalk sale doesn't entitle you to block the sidewalk. Or, you know, put guard dogs around your racks or whatever, you know, some things. Anyway, okay, moving on to number three. Minor in and out merchandising and services may be permitted by the village clerk, provided the following standards are observed. Number one, "All goods and services shall be placed or kept so that the, so that a minimum five-foot sidewalk is maintained and as an open and up, on it, well, that's just the same, as an open and unobstructed walkway adjacent to the street right of way."
I think that tells what you just said.
That's what I just said.
Yeah.
I thought we took out the...
That, this is just for, this is not for the restaurant seating. This is minor in and out merchandising and services. So are we okay with closing racks being close to the street, or do we want them by the business entrance? Or are, are minor in and out merchandising and services? I'm trying to think of services that are non, these, I would say this section is not the outdoor restaurant seating.
But it's a, it could be a service, right, where someone's delivering a coffee to curbside or to the outdoor seating.
Right, so we're, do you still on, okay.
My, my, everyone knows my mindset, I think everything should be kept up to the building and keep the clearance from the road on everything.
Well, you certainly want some egress, so, I mean, I don't have any problems with number one.
Yeah, I mean, I can't see a clo- someone wanting to put a clothing rack right on the curb where a car's parked. But the, who's gonna walk around that clothing rack to look at clothes when it's right up against car, how do you open a car door?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, same thing goes, I mean, I guess the hit on the seating too, I mean, you can allow seating right on the curb? 'Cause if, if we don't say it's attached to the building, five foot from the built, from the building to the seating, you, they, you can put the seating right down on the curb.
Our benches are, are not. Our benches...
Our benches...
Are out.
They are.
And they're not a problem.
They're not on the curb.
Didn't say they were. But they're, they're definitely within the five-foot area.
"All displays shall be located and arranged to protect the health, safety and welfare of the village," is the next line. So obviously you can't be in traffic or blocking a car door from opening. Self-evident. This is, I mean, this is, the existing languages exist for a long time, I know we've gotten killed.
Yeah.
We might kill each other tonight, don't worry about it.
The highlighted yellow number one, Karen, is that additional changed, or why is it highlighted?
Um, I think the discussion, that was just highlighted, nothing was changed, but it was under discussion these last few times about this, um...
Five foot?
There, or the, not the five foot, but is it adjacent to the street, adjacent to the building was the placement of this, that's why that's been highlighted.
This isn't even about seating areas.
No, but the merchandising displays.
It's kinda like if they kept the racks to the building.
So then, um, maintain adjacent?
Walkway adjacent to the street, so that would say you'd have to be, I don't have an issue with this language.
Okay, where, where do we move, where are we, three?
Three.
Okay, let's...
No area.
So no area designated for outdoor merchandising shall obstruct or create a hazard for pedestrians or motorists. So, there's your car door opening onto the table of diners. All outdoor merchandising shall be confined to paved areas. No outdoor merchandising, uh, area shall encroach into an established road right of way or beyond the width of the individual storefront?
And that's where I had objection before in that. I think you should take out from the word, or bein, after, if you're gonna leave in or beyond the width of the individual's storefront, then I think that you, we need to add in there without, that, that there is an exception if the adjoining property...
Business owner, proprietor.
Property proprietor has agreed to it, or some such wording of that.
Unless adjoining businesses offer, uh, written permission, is that...
In writing, yes.
Yeah, I can, that's, that's good, Jim.
Okay.
Can, can there just be conversation between the store owners to allow something like this? Do we have to put it into the ordinance so that...
I, I would think so, 'cause it could... I, I would think so, because it could, then he said, she said, well, I talked to so-and-so, and he said it was fine. And then two weeks later, the guy's mad about something.
That's, if they get mad about something, they get mad about something, but to, to to address what Bill said, we're essentially, if we're asking for it in writing, you're actually talking about putting on an easement. And, I mean, that's what it is. So, yeah, you can use this, well, then you're getting into some fairly long, involved legal phraseology, so that they understand it's only for X. If they want to have an argument about it, two weeks on down the road, okay, get your crap out from, in front of my place, that's fine.
So then, so you're adding language, then we don't even need to add. It's just a conversation between them, and if there's no complaint to the village, nothing needs to be done.
That's correct.
So we don't need to add the language.
Then we could take out.
I, I believe we're reviewing this because there has been issues, where there has been conflicts between businesses about this matter. So that is why the clerk would like us to address it. You know, suggest.
I agree with the, what's here in red, but the additional with authorization.
Well, so all the, all of these items are still criteria that has to be permitted by the clerk. So this is still stuff that they have to come forward permission. So, you know, similar to other sign-offs they have in a community where, you know, you can do something if your neighbor agrees to it. If there is a, a rent agreement of, yeah, they can put my, I mean, it could be a, just a little form that the neighboring business consents to having the merchandise display extend onto their property. You know, if this is something that they're getting permission from the clerk for in the first place, there can just be a little permission form that, yeah, I got my neighbor's signature that they're okay with this. I don't, I think that's okay.
Okay, the form would have to say something about for, for the following dates. And then it's just automatically terminated on its own face. The form itself becomes very important.
I like that. Speaking from experience on the zoning board level, people will say, my neighbor's just fine with it, and their neighbor's sitting in the crowd and says, no, thank you.
Well, sometimes the clerk's going to have to act like the teacher and tell the kids to straighten up. I mean, I don't see, you know, she's paid to do that. It may be painful, but you have to do what you have to do.
Well, the form eliminates a lot of extra time that you have to go over now. I got to find the person, call them, say, hey, did you, and then you're, you're doing all this shuffling. It was a form when you say, yep, thanks.
Adjacent requires neighbor approval.
Cool. Okay. Number four, oh, wait, six. Temporary signs may be allowed as permitted in section four, six, dash, five, seven, eight, D. No problems with that. Okay, number four. Restaurants, lounges, and similar businesses which are going to provide outdoor seating must submit an application which shall include a detailed drawing showing the proposed seating arrangements and other physical structures within the seating plan for approval by the village clerk. Seating in an active alley in the rear. Why is that in red?
Oh, that, so that was added language that, the the original added language the clerk wanted to have was seating in an alley in the rear, or in the rear of the business is prohibited. And last meeting, planning commission said, no, seating in an inactive alley in the rear of the business is a lot, you know, or seating in an active alley is prohibited, but the clerk said that she saw that creating conflict. So that's just added, that language is just red at the moment because the clerk says, no, I want that area to still not have any seating, last planning commission, you guys said you did. So I'm just relaying her message to you. Or, you know, seating in, and, yeah. But she said, even in an inactive alley, she'd prefer that there be seating because that is a pedestrian circulation area. She wants pedestrians.
Maintaining the five foot, if we're going to allow seating throughout, and some businesses have only entrances, maybe I only think of one, off of the alley, how are we going to say that now you can't have an outdoor seat, and you're going to let everyone else have an outdoor seat? On an inactive alley, there's no.
Yeah, we're missing a sentence. What's written here is not a sentence.
No.
Exactly.
It's okay, period, there's no, there's no verb, it's just so we're trying to say seating in an inactive, in, in the seating in an active alley in the rear of a business is prohibited. But specifically allowed in an inactive alley, is that what we're saying?
Yeah, and I said, it's, the setbacks to five foot still needs to be maintained, but that's written elsewhere in the ordinance. Or I don't know if it, or does the five foot, yeah, the five foot applies to seating, yeah.
What we have there is, is, is not a sentence, it doesn't mean.
Right, that was my mistake, I apologize for that.
No, 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 so, just, so we, again, so we don't have to beat this to death for another four months. Seating. We will, I, I, don't worry, I'm going away in February, so you won't have to even get anything past, I won't be.
Put it on in February.
Put it on in February.
Ever. We'll get it done.
Seating in an active alley in the rear of a business is prohibited, is that?
In an active alley in the rear of a business.
Is prohibited.
Do you want anything in here about insurance?
What's that?
For these people, because seasonal is going to go, the annual seasonal out is being removed. So they are not going to come back in again, as long as they don't change anything. Do we want to be the ones to say that they have to have insurance? And we're going to leave it up to the clerk?
No, I think it should be defined. And again, I'm not opposed to a fee.
I mean, pardon me if I'm missing it too, but is there anything about these things being kept up, cleaned up, in good working condition like the RVs?
Not rusted, not, yeah.
But not here, there's none of that, unless I'm missing it. There's nothing about the state of it.
There's a, there's probably a definition problem here. And these gentlemen, I think, are here to talk about peaches. And that alley, it's inactive because it's now.
The alley behind them is absolutely inactive.
It's inactive, but it's not vacated.
No, I know that.
It's currently inactive.
So the, the definition, we have to put the words active and inactive in there in order for this to make any sense.
No seating in active alley, yeah, I mean.
The only thing we care about, what we're prohibiting is in the active alley.
In the rear of the business. Not open for vehicular traffic.
An alley.
Not open to.
No, 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 Megan, the area behind their building is an alley. It's a planted alley, it's never been vacated. It's just been.
Inactive, no vehicular traffic.
Right, so it's become an inactive alley.
Stark Brother Alley, Parker Alley.
Or going down towards.
Marketplace Alley is, if that's what it's called, is.
There's an inactive alley adjacent to my building. That parking is all, that sidewalk and parking is all in an inactive alley that the village has a lease, a quid pro quo lease with the whatever banking institution currently owns that building on the corner, and they've changed their names repeatedly. So there is an inactive alley there, but where there was a building is, is now by fiat or by lease an alley, believe it or not. For real.
You get all that, Karen?
Do you see where we're trying to go here?
I, if we do do a fee, I think, I think you mentioned something along the lines of either square footage or.
Yeah, the clerk said that the village is not pursuing that at the moment.
I would question that the clerk is not the village, and it never went before council, so that is, I don't think her position to say that we wouldn't be.
Okay.
So I would entertain some, I mean, you said twenty-five to five-hundred, that's a pretty huge range, but I don't know what the, the standard or the average or what most are doing. If we could gather that information.
It, I mean, it's a wide variety, like, I mean, I checked places in the basically tri-county area, places with downtown, it just, it varies. They'll do square footage of the patio area, or they'll do just a a permit, an initial permit review fee, which tends to be a few hundred dollars. And then the fee, the ninety-day fee on top of that. And usually the initial permit fee is, it's approved once, but then the renewing fee is just, it's annual, or whenever you put it out.
Who's going to keep track of all of this? I'm serious.
Keep track of what, permits?
No, if you, if you're going to have a renewal fee after ninety days or something like that.
No, I think it should be limited in probably a year, once a year.
Okay.
Or once a season, if it's summer, winter, some people might not want to do stuff in the winter. Every six months, however we define that.
Why not once a year?
Right. A year, that's fine, I'm fine with that also, a yearly fee.
A number in mind?
But when they pay that fee, they provide their insurance.
They provide their insurance. Two fifty?
Hundred is more, that's plenty.
Two fifty?
A hundred.
Two fifty?
Hundred bucks.
Two fifty for a year? I mean, something that's, for a year, that's, that's two tables, right? It's half, half, a quarter of a weekend it's paid for, right? I'm just, I'm throwing it out there.
I threw out a hundred, I thought that was plenty.
What do, what do people get for their fee, permission?
The ability to use public land.
Use public property for making money.
So, permission.
And then there's some clerical needs, you know, filing the permits, checking the insurance, this, this, and that. Lisa, do you have any input?
Nope.
She's like, I'm busy writing.
Lisa, what do you think about that? What kind of fee would be reasonable?
No, I know there's a few municipalities that do it.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
There's a few municipalities that do do it, I don't know what they charge. Like Karen said, I believe they charge a one-time upfront fee, and then a fee, you know, annually, is what I'm understanding.
Somebody has to keep track of all of that.
Somebody, I keep track of that, and I'm going to make the assumption it's probably going to fall on an office staff person.
I.
I would, whatever the fee is, you could say renewed every April or whatever month that we decide it needs to be renewed on, and then you know, everyone that's got it. You better have your renewal form filled out, brought in, and check attached, or.
Just for seating areas on public land. Is it on your property, there's no need to apply. See, are we going to table it again? We're going to table it again?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, there's a lot of changes.
We have all the information you need, Karen?
Yes.
I'll make the motion to table again with recommended changes to be brought back next month.
Support?
Support, Mr. Webb?
Mr. Webb.
Okay, motion before us is to table the outdoor merchandising and sidewalks sales ordinance until next month, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now.
Can we just table this next new business site plan review? It's getting a little late.
No.
You guys aren't waiting, are you?
All right, number eight, new business, site plan review, one thirty South Main Street. Peaches Brunch House, review by Karen. Thanks for your patience, guys.
So the site plan we have before us is for a small addition to the applicant's restaurant at one thirty South Main Street. The applicant is looking to do some interior remodeling, and as part of that remodeling plan, they like to move the current vestibule, which is located in the interior of the building, to the exterior of the building. The addition would be at where the building entrance is currently. The addition is going to be seventy-two square feet in area and reach a height of ten feet. The addition does just about go out to the property line, which is allowed in the, in this district. Therefore, in my review of the site plan, I found that it met the regulations of the zoning ordinance, and I recommend approval.
So this is just basically for the new vestibule and ramp and walkway?
Just the vestibule, the ramp is, the building code, I don't, it's not regulated by the zoning ordinance.
Do we need a motion on this?
The only other, on the plan, the only thing, other thing that I saw was, would be to the west, the new standing seen metal roofing, is that an addition onto the building also? Yeah, please.
Hello, everybody, I'm Frank, Al's son. First of all, thank you for having us here, we really appreciate it. It's a great honor to speak before you guys, and to be a part of this community. And hopefully we've got a new relation with you guys moving forward. And to your question, yes, there will be a roof or a ceiling that goes over the vestibule that will stay on the property line, and it'll have a nice, beautiful slant on it.
I'm talking, if you're looking at the vestibule, to the far left of the building, on this plan here.
That's a awning, I believe, over a window?
Attached to the back of the current building.
No.
Can I see it?
You're on this page? This front, this is the east elevation, this is the side of the building, Justin. This right here? Page A one?
This is.
Look at the, look at the bottom right corner, the page you want.
Yeah, that's, I'm on A one.
So if you're looking at this, this is the east elevation.
I'm looking at it backwards.
Okay.
Makes sense, because I'm seeing that, I'm like, you can't go to the back of the building. I saw the south up here.
Okay.
All right. So there, there is some still, clearance then from the sidewalk or from the property line with this? Minimal, Karen, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, they're, they're allowed to.
They're allowed to, but so we're, we're within that currently, so I don't see any reason why this wouldn't be.
So basically, you're saying we are looking at this. There is a vestibule inside of the building that is going to be eliminated, and the vestibule is going to be part of the outside structure now, right?
Correct.
The door is opening in, not out onto the sidewalk, I'm assuming?
I mean, what's the code, I mean, we have it. So, so right now, they're on the other side of the door, if you go towards the east. Yeah.
Yeah, they're going to the east from the west.
Yes. Yeah, they'll be pulling them out, yes.
They're going towards the ramps.
Oh, so they're all those.
Mike?
If the occupant loaded seat fifty, they have to swing away outward.
Oh, it's a code.
Okay.
And they swing up the door, the long leg with their, their entry ramp. And I did ask that they provided us with a survey, which they did do. They wouldn't, because I wasn't sure that they were going to still be on their property.
Yeah.
And that's when I had to, you know, Karen, decided that they had to come here to DC, but my concern was there was no, not on record, we had shown that, so they did welcome, get a survey, had it surveyed, and they are on their property, so I was.
So the only doors that are access from that ramp? I just, it's on the same A one, the bottom, it says new aluminum entrance system with an arrow pointing, which isn't, in the south elevation, it doesn't look like a door, but it says, there it also says the new aluminum entrance system. That's not any type of doorway or active panel?
Are you talking about on West Lafayette Street?
Yeah, the south elevation, it says new aluminum entrance system.
I think it's talking about the whole vestibule.
Yeah, it's just the whole vestibule. So you will not be able to walk inside that way, it'll be a nice, beautiful window casing with brick. It'll be a nice, beautiful window casing with brick going up. Yeah.
It's, Justin, that side's shown in that picture right above that.
Yeah, I see that. I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't any type of, it didn't look to be, but it says entrance system, so. Do we need a motion to approve?
Did you make a motion?
Did you? I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Mr. Hale, second. Motion before us is to approve this site plan. I don't think we need to do a roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
Wow, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for not tabling us.
Eager to see you guys.
Okay. I ask for unanimous consent to adjourn in all favor.
Aye.